All right. Hello, Chris. Thank you for joining us.
How are you doing?
Good, good, good. All right. So we can get started. The time now is 5:34 and this is a Maintenance and Development Subcommittee meeting on discussion around the funding for private ways, as well as a discussion around the leaf collection plan, as some folks have alerted me that. I haven't picked up yet. So just wanted to dive a little bit into that briefly as well. But we can get started if I can. I'll just start in my left-hand corner here. Just for the record, introduce yourselves. I'll start with Chris.
Chris Signoli, DPW Director, City of Springfield.
Lindsay.
Lindsay Hackett, Deputy CFO for the State of Springfield.
Councillor Kern.
Sean Kern, City Councillor here in the City of Springfield.
Thank you. Councillor Letterman.
Jesse Letterman, City Councillor at large.
Councillor Ramos.
Councillor Ramos, what a councillor.
Right. Thank you, councillor. So yes, and I am Marcus Williams, Ward Five City Councillor and Chair of the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. All right. So we all know, I think, that by this point, the private ways discussion has been a longstanding topic for both residents, the administration, as well as councillors alike. So, you know, this is now more so a discussion kind of geared towards the funding after several conversations have already been had, as well as some information correspondence being circulated based on private ways. So I do appreciate you, Chris, for sending around that list again and reattaching that for the private ways, which has been my bible within the last few months, just seeing kind of the landscape, especially within Ward Five, which I know, of course, the higher concentration of private ways, Pine Point and Sixteen Acres typically happens there. So if we can just get started, maybe, Chris, I know you sent that around in email earlier today, kind of giving us an overview of that list. I'm mentioning that there's about thirty-six miles of private ways in various conditions. I know that the list that you attached does not distinguish between the type of private way, as some of those, of course, run through woods and are not, of course, rational streets. So the calculated need for those private ways ranges from twenty-five to thirty million, as you mentioned. And we have in the city's capital plan currently a number of five million for resurfacing the existing paved roadways. So before we get into just comments and questions from councillors on, just one question I had, Chris, based on this topic first, and again, we'll spend a little time on the leaf collection process as well as in regards to that five million for resurfacing of existing paved roadways. Is that in conjunction with private ways, or is that just kind of the totality of the number?
The five million that's been in the capital plan, obviously, I could put in twenty-five, twenty, whatever, million dollars. When we put stuff together for paving, or whether it's private ways or public ways or sidewalks, what usually ends up going into the capital plan is not the, on something like that, the full amount, you know, as example on sidewalks, I could probably spend a hundred million dollars. So what I put in is usually something that would be a year or two worth of work that would then, we would then, I almost want to say make a resubmission or have it as a standing item within the capital plan. So if somebody were to give me five million dollars for work within a capital plan, it would be in conjunction, excuse me, it would be in conjunction with our regular paving program, which then would probably be done over a two-year period. And during that period of time, my opinion is I would keep it on the capital plan as a continued number moving forward.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. We're also joined now by councillors Davila, Councillor Allen, as well as Council President Justin Hurst for joining us. We had just briefly provided some context around what was sent in that email to the group earlier, which also included a list of the private ways in the City of Springfield. This is a discussion, again, kind of focusing more so around the funding for private ways. And hopefully, you know, with an attempt to move the needle on the issue to get some more in that direction, as you know, this has been a longstanding issue with residents. So just pretty much just ask, based on, again, as Chris mentioned, we have in the East Capital Plan a number of five million for resurfacing of existing paved roadways. And at this time, I'll certainly open it up to my colleagues. If there are any other questions around the funding for private ways, feel free at this time to raise your hand. And I will unmute you. All right. Councillor Ramos, you can unmute yourself.
Chairman, thank you. Thanks for, first of all, for putting this meeting together. Greatly appreciated. This is a topic that I have brought up very, very frequently over the last seven years that I've been on the council. Each time that there is either an un-expended bond bill proceeds, anytime that there is free cash transfer, anytime that there is a general fund transfer, I always bring up the issue of private ways. Because there are so many of them, we've received so many complaints from our constituents, and we just, you know, it's very frustrating to continue to give them the same answer. So, and to, you know, to be fair, those meetings are probably not the appropriate time to have this conversation, but this is, you know, I think it's a better setting for us to have a discussion particularly on, or specifically on private ways, and come up with a strategy on how we're going to address the improvement of all of the private ways that we have in our city. So I also want to thank Chris for sending that information, and thank the finance team for not forgetting about this very important issue. Just a couple of questions that I have for Chris, you're probably the best person to answer these questions. In terms of what we've done recently, say, in the past twenty-four months, how many private ways have we paved in the past twenty-four months? And the second part of my question is, are those private ways, once they're paved, are they then accepted as public ways and then eligible for Chapter 90?
The first part of your question, as far as paving private ways within the last twenty-four months, I don't think we've done any. And the second answer is yes. Once we do improve them, they are submitted to the state as part of our public way program. Every year, we probably submit, I'm going to say between, excuse me, ten and fifteen streets to Mass DOT that change their definition from public to private. And most of them over, I'm going to say, the past three or four years, I want to say we've probably done about thirty of them total, have been in the Pine Point and Sixteen Acres area. A lot of these roadways have been private ways in the past and required minimal improvements that our staff, our employees have done versus having to have a contractor go out and pave them. You know, pavement's in decent condition, it needs some work on drainage, it needs some curbing, and it's stuff that we do. So every year, we do send a list over to Mass DOT with a handful of roads there. That inventory every year then gets added in and is one of the, lane miles is one of the components that Mass DOT uses for distribution of Chapter 90 money.
I do remember Wallaston Street. We did that one, I believe it was within the last twenty-four months.
Yeah, Wallaston is a DPW screw-up. That's probably the best way that I can say that. I know you're all amazed that we never make any mistakes over at DPW, but Wallaston Street was one of the streets that was on the list that was a private way. When we submitted a list of roadways that had been upgraded and fixed and whatever, Wallaston Street was on there. It shouldn't have been. The Mass DOT approved it. So therefore, once it was approved, our guys put it on the list for paving. And I know Marcus, you, and I know Orlando, and Jesse, over the past year and a half had been asking me about it. And when I happened to see it on the list, I was extremely confused until I talked to my guys and, you know, basically said to them, this should have never have been put on the list. But that was one of those that really fell through the cracks. And I was extremely nervous that Mass DOT, as they do from time to time, would come out, look at these roads and go, wait a minute, you know, this didn't really meet the criteria. They never did. We went through, we got it done. I, you know, I didn't pull it off the list, we went through and got it done. Technically, it was a public way when we did it on that. It shouldn't have been on the list. I'm not trying to, you know, take it away from the people there. It was well-deserving. And that was one of those roadways that a developer walked away from back when they were doing the development on there. And one of the things, you know, with your ordinance, Councillor Ramos, and just with what we've been doing for approvals of subdivisions, we're getting bonds now. So if a contractor walks away, we have the money to finish the roads. And we've been very successful because no contractor wants to have their bond pulled. So we've been lucky at that. But yeah, at the time we did Wallaston Street, that was technically a public way.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate your help on helping us draft that ordinance. And I'm hopeful that we'll give it final passage on Monday.
Yeah.
So just one final statement, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear that I've, you know, what I hope will come out of this meeting is that we'll have a plan, at the very least, to address some of the backlog of private ways. I know that a few years ago, we did a five-million-dollar bond. Unfortunately, I think it was less than fifty percent of that went towards actual private ways. A lot of it went towards sidewalks, which was much needed. But we also had a portion of that go towards demo. And actually, there were some public ways that were completed with that five-million-dollar bond. So I'm hoping that we can, if that is an option, that we can go that route and do another bond that is specific for private ways. You know, just an idea. I know that there are other, I mean, I would love to hear from finance to see what ideas they have. Because we do have options as to, you know, how we can at least start chipping away at that list. So that's just my comments. And if, Liz, if you want to weigh in on some ideas that your department has, I would love to hear them.
Definitely. So you know that we have our hands tied here with funding options for this. So Chris can't use Chapter 90 money, we know, which really, outside of any other funding sources, and I don't know, I was just really trying quickly to look around to see, because, I mean, this is an issue in many places, not just here. Other places, what they do, and I'm not just talking about Massachusetts, I'm talking about pretty much New England, to fund the development of private ways into public ways. Right now, it would be a hundred percent city-funded. And unless we were using a general fund appropriation, we would need to bond. And as you know, the reason that we usually can't use un-expended bond proceeds is because there's a term life of five years on bond money for private ways. Generally, most construction projects were at twenty or thirty years. Five years is something that we would usually use for something like vehicles with a shorter use of life. So we've never issued debt, at least since I've been here, for specifically private ways. Again, at this point, I don't know of any other funding source available to us for that. So it would be a hundred percent city cost. So that would be our options right now. Something, you know, we would find funding somewhere, understanding it would be a hundred percent city cost for any of these repairs. And also, we would have, if we did use bond money, we would have to sell debt for five years. So that is what Chris has on the capital plan for private ways. And the reason that it doesn't get higher year after year, and we've talked about this before, when we've talked about the capital plan, is that one of the major metrics in the capital plan in getting a project bumped towards the top of the list is outside funding. So if we're able to get the most bang for our buck, meaning we can spend, you know, one million dollars on a six-million-dollar project, that's something that bumps it to the top of the list. So, long story short, I'm not saying anything you haven't heard before, without some kind of outside funding source to help us with the costs for these things that Chris has outlined and what he sent around, it would have to be a decision to be made for something that would be a hundred percent understood city cost.
Thank you, Lindsay. And before, Councillor Allen, I'll get right to you. I just had one comment just on that. So, I mean, so in regards to that conversation, I mean, you know, who needs to be at the table? I know as a former grant writer, as everyone, as I've said a million times already, you know, there's certain mechanisms that you can tap into, such as like COMBIs, for example, which offers, like, you know, the Department of Transportation grants or anything related to federal grants. So I was just wondering, are you aware currently of any potential funding or revenue streams that might come from those type of mechanisms that our grant writer for the city has access to?
So I definitely ask Melanie Koby, who's our City Grants Director, to do some research about private ways. As far as I know, she hasn't up until now, but I can definitely have her do that.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
And I know, just to, I'm sorry, Marcus, just to chime in. On any of the programs that money basically comes available from the state, virtually none of it, they look at private ways as privately-owned property or not public property. So utilizing money to turn it from private to public is, I don't want to say illegal, but most of the grants and things like that for transportation, you know, specifically say it cannot be used for private property and then used. So flipping it over, there's not a lot available on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Councillor.
Oh, sorry. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, what Chris was just getting at is kind of what I was going to ask about. Orlando, I know that you've been passionate about private ways. I don't share your passion. I've had one complaint that I can recall in eleven years on a private way. It was recent, but after I talked with them a little bit, they kind of backed off. And I think of all the public ways that we don't have enough money to fund every year with the paving money we get. So my question is, so I differ in my, it's of course, it'd be nice to do private ways for everybody and all that. Not that I don't like the idea, it's just that it doesn't seem as important to me as public ways. And I know even after we spend the Chapter 90 money every year or whatever, there are still more public ways that need to be paved that we don't have the money to do. So how do you, Chris, I ask you, you know, maybe to you and maybe to Orlando, like, how do you prioritize private ways above public ways? Or maybe, Chris, it sounds like you don't prioritize private ways over public ways. Do you always feel, Chris, that there are more streets, public ways, that need to be treated or repaved or whatever?
When we do, we rate streets throughout the city, both public and private ways, as long as they're dirt paths and whether it's millings, whether it's dirt, whether it's paved. If it's a private way, it still gets rated. So we rate all the streets regardless of whether they're in good condition or regardless of their rating. So they're all rated, we have the list. When, in my opinion, I would look for the biggest bang for the buck. If somebody came to me and said, here's ten million dollars, how would I divide it between public and private ways? I would probably take three-quarters or more and use it on public ways and the rest on private ways. And the public ways, I'd be picking the worst because I got to address them. On the private ways, I would usually take the best. Because on the best on the private ways is the smallest amount of investment to get the street turned into a public way and at the same time, looking at private ways that have the most people on it. And I use as an example, I know one that Orlando had, we were talking about Cardinal, and then there's Morton Street. You know, these are streets that need three, four, five-hundred-thousand dollars worth of work that you're going to make six or eight people happy versus going to a public or private way that might be in Indian Orchard, or, excuse me, in Sixteen Acres, that might be in decent shape, but for thirty thousand, we overlay the whole thing and I make it a public way. So that's where that balance comes in. If I had to make a decision, is which one do you spend the money on? I lean towards, you know, doing as much as I can on the public way side because technically, we have a lot more liability and responsibility within the public way than I do the private way. But I would still want to get that done. You know, I still want to get as much of it done as I can. But there's a little bit of an opposite thing when I would go to pick streets.
When you say, you would still want to get what done? I just missed what you meant.
You know, I want to do both of them, but if I had to make a priority on them, you know, obviously, the public way becomes a lot more important on that. So, and I know when I was talking, I mentioned Cardinal, I meant Misha, I'm sorry, Orlando. You know, it's like streets like that, that are just, you know, they're dirt streets, people live on them, and, you know, that need four, five-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, then it becomes a priority of which ones you want to do. You know, we did, when we were out a couple of weeks ago, Marcus, we were discussing Cabinet. You know, Cabinet was a street, I think we spent a hundred and fifty thousand on that. You know, the street had pavement there, it wasn't horrible, but we did some drainage and we paved it. And it was, there's what, nine, ten houses there, you know? So, you know, that was kind of a balance. And we did a few others, and I'm trying to think of the other one, Berry. We did, that was, you know, almost eight-hundred-thousand dollars. That was a dirt road that probably had thirty people living on it. You know, so then you start to try and figure out where is your best bang for the buck on what you're trying to accomplish.
So, Chris, just a follow-up on that. So you fix a private way, spend a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, and it's better for the, you know, the eight or ten households who were there or whatever. Is there some other thing that's beneficial about having done that? Does it become a public way? Is that what you're saying?
I would make it, yeah, when we do whatever improvements, I would do it to the level to make sure it becomes a public way, that's for sure. Then it's a matter of, okay, are we dealing, is it, you know, is it a dead end? Is it a cut-through street? Is it, you know, do people use this street? Is, you know, how many cars use it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Then gets into the decision-making process of what we want to pick.
And is the money that you're referring to in these cases where you have done work on private ways, is that Chapter 70 money or is that just city money or is it grant money or what is it?
I'm sorry, Tim, I lost you for a second.
Okay, sorry. The money that you're using in those examples you just gave of investing in some private ways, is that money city money? Is it Chapter 70 money? Is it?
The minimum money that we're using now is basically budget money. It's basically, you know, our guys going in there and fixing, you know, we fix catch basins anyway, so it's a matter of going in there and making sure the drainage works and laying some pipe. So it's basically budget money that we're using.
And you're just saying?
And it's where we can do minimal, it's minimal type of investment.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm all set for now.
Right. Thank you, Councillor Allen. Chris, I'll just circle back. So I know, especially around Morton Street, when we were having that conversation a couple of years, when it was really coming up. Of course, you know, still no movement there, but probably as expected. But I just had a question around kind of another funding mechanism, which I was hearing being tossed around. And that was the residents, like, raising their own funds to kind of tackle their street. Guidance on that or, you know?
Within the ordinance, within the city ordinance and rules of the road and some other areas, residents can petition the city improvements to their street. However, when they petition for improvements to their street, the way that it is set up is that the costs become a better, and I can't remember off the top of my head of the split, but use Morton Street as an example. Say that the cost becomes four-hundred-thousand dollars and there are eight residents on the street, those residents then end up with a forty-thousand-dollar bill. Ends up being leaned at their property as far as, you know, almost like a referendum that would be in other towns, you know, for schools and things like that.
Right, right.
So, you know, when you're talking about things like sidewalks and other stuff, roadways just become, when I look at it, I just say this just becomes way too expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
You're a homeowner on the street and you say no, and the other homeowner says yes, you still get stuck with the bill. Now, this has not done anything like that. I've gone through and I've come across, you know, maybe it might have been a couple in the early nineties, and then there were some much older streets where there were commercial developments on it that needed to be upgraded for roads, et cetera. So that happened. But I have not seen any, but I've gone through the ordinance on it. And, you know, there's a whole mechanism for costs. You know, it's like, you know, a resident getting a few grand for a school in, you know, Long Meadow or something. But, you know, getting thirty, you know, thirty thousand or even twenty thousand placed on top of you for twenty years, that's a lot of money.
Yeah. No, understood. I'm going to pass to Councillor Ramos, and then we'll transition to the second agenda topic. I want to dedicate some time there as well. So Councillor Ramos, I'll give it to you.
Mr. Chair, Chris, what is the formula for Chapter 90 funds? Is it based on the total miles of streets that each municipality have?
Yeah, that's the primary, that's the primary number that they use. I want to say that's about sixty-five percent of it. The other thing, the other components have to do with employment and have to do with transportation volume that is provided by the state. And those go into a calculation, and every so often, they modify those a little bit. And over the last couple of years, there has been a big push to modify it based upon public transportation as well, you know, for communities, you know, à la Boston, who obviously have a lot of public transportation. So what they were trying to do was add a component in there is that if we have a lot of public transportation, we should get rewarded with more Chapter 90 money, which sounds great if you're the city of Boston and even if you're the city of Springfield. But if you're Wilberham, you know, if you're Palmer, or if you're a town that has no public transportation, you get zero. So, but basically, it has to do with employment statistics, basically the number of people that are being employed in the city, not city residents employed, but within the city, traffic that is created within the city and the miles of road that you have in the city that you maintain.
So it's fair to say that if we, you know, if we were to increase the number of public ways that we have, then we would get an increase on Chapter 90?
Yeah, and when we've done it over the years, it ends up being, you know, I'd probably say it ends up being a few thousand dollars. You know, we get three-point-six million. So it gives us more, but, you know, it's not all of a sudden going to go from three to four million dollars. The other item that I just wanted to mention about Chapter 90 is, over the last, I'm going to say, five or six years, the legislature, who argues, they, you know, Senate and House argue back and forth about transportation money, have always tried to do about three-hundred million statewide for Chapter 90 money. And it always ends up getting whittled down to two-hundred, whether it's the legislatures that do it or it's the governor's office. And twice over the last seven years, the governor has released an additional hundred, well, I shouldn't say a hundred million. He did a hundred million once, and I think last year it was twenty million. So the legislature and especially on the transportation side, you know, have been extremely aggressive early in the budget cycle and have tried to push the number, but in the end, it always ends up reverting back. We have been at two-hundred million statewide for ten years. That number hasn't moved. And the Mass Municipal Association and American Public Works Association, you know, we, I don't want to say protest, but we protest against the state and, you know, we're trying to get that number moved up. But it's been, it's not, and it's not a budget number either. It's a line item that's part of the budget, but it's not really a budget because there's federal funds that are associated with it. And we need to get that budget a little so that everybody can get some work. Because there's towns out there that are getting peanuts, you know, some of the smaller towns. And, you know, we are one of the luckier ones, even if it's three-point-six million. Luckier ones, even if it's three point six million.
So this was, I ever, I've had this conversation with several of my, um, uh, of my new colleagues in the state legislature. Regarding chapter ninety funds and what I was told is that this was, this was supposed to be the year that we were gonna get the increase. Um, but this was before COVID, obviously, and so that's why. Reduced from three hundred million back to two hundred million this year.
Yeah, went, yeah, went back, because there was a, and it was, it was significantly delayed, I don't think we got our, we usually get a, a, we get a preliminary letter. Excuse me, in beginning of February. And then we get the official notification usually. April, this year, I don't think we got a notification the middle of May. All of the previous stuff that we had been receiving was three hundred million, three hundred million, three hundred million. And then when it was voted on, it was voted on at two hundred. And in that same bill, I'm trying to remember, there was something, oh. Uh, transferring responsibility of. The MBTA to mass, from mass DOT to another board. That got tied up in the same bill. So obviously, the Boston legislators got legislators got tied up into the discussion about the MBTA and the problems and. Overruns and things like that, and the chapter ninety was caught up in that from a timing standpoint. But then, yes, it did get reverted back to the two hundred million.
One, one final request, um, and I won't, I won't turn it into a question, you don't have to answer it to tonight. Um, but Chris, if you can send me, um, if there's anything that your department has their eye on in terms of state legislation. That would address, um, private ways. If you could send it to me via email, I would love to take a look at it, um, you know, there's something that I want to continue to advocate for even at the state level, so.
Sure, that's no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Chris, and, um, to that, to that note, I think it actually might make sense to hold a subsequent, uh, meeting at some point. Uh, perhaps after the holiday to, to have a continuation of this discussion, um, and, and Lindsay, it would be great, you know, at that, at that point. Um, if, you know, Grant Rider, if their time allows for them to do additional, additional research on some, uh, opportunities. That might allow for some, um, some reimbursement or some sort of matching for the city dollars to, to private ways, so. Thank you, thank you both for that. All right, so if there's no other questions on private ways or comments, um, we'll just turn our attention now to the, the leaf collection process. I imagine this, this portion of the meeting might not, might not take as much time, but I certainly have received, um, some, some calls. Questions on the activity around leaf collection, uh, for the city, whether there was any delays, um, and just kind of the, the. Direction residents should be taking, um, to, to have some attention, uh, on, you know, the problem for their particular residences, so. Chris, I'll, I'll just turn it over to you, uh, and, you know, other folks can chat in if need be.
Yep, no problem. Uh, leaf collection, we start, I mean, we do leaf collection starting in April and go all the way till the end of the year whenever we can, uh, that the weather flies. Uh, this year, what we have noticed is. Uh, we had virtually zero, I don't want to say zero, but extremely minimal leaf pickup on the street. Uh, basically till November first, before that. Uh, we usually see a steady stream starting at the end of September and ramping up around the first week in November. This year, we had virtually nothing out on the street and then all of a sudden, that first week in November, uh. I guess the technical term is the shit hit the fan and everybody, all the leaves came down at once. And everybody put everything out, so we went, we were, we're short some people for a lot of different reasons, but we went out and hired. Uh, we have a company that we have anywhere between five and eight. Uh, um, temporary employees working for us doing just yard waste. Uh, so that kind of gets us full steam on that. And what we've basically been doing is we've been running anywhere between two and four trucks, depending upon which day it is. Uh, we have to use rear loaders. Uh, we cannot use trash trucks, we cannot use recycling trucks, we use the real rear loaders. Uh, because I know some people have asked me, why don't you just take a trash truck and do it, you can't. Uh, A contamination, B, there's no way to get the stuff in there. Uh, so we've been, we use the rear loaders. Once the, uh, once the volume starts to get up there. It basically becomes a, our guys are working anywhere between ten and twelve hours a day. So we started the program, we were picking everything up. And these trucks were now starting to get filled up within an hour and a half. Once they're full, we have to, we go to the landfill, we dump it at the landfill. We then clean, we have to clean that truck out, bring it back, and it's about a forty-five minute process. We're making, each truck is making about four to five trips to the landfill a day. So in true terms, we're probably doing five, five and a half hours of pickup. And say four hours of driving. And the volume became so unprecedented that. We started to get behind a, a couple of days and I'm gonna say with the last week. Today, we are doing Friday from a week and a half ago. Um, that, which would have been my street, our guys were out there this morning picking that stuff up. One of the things that I fully anticipate to happen between today and tomorrow, finishing Friday. That when we move into the next week, the volumes out there, because we've been delayed. Are, are going to be relatively minimal. We've been telling three one one and we've done, uh, I've done interviews, I've done, uh. Uh, Facebook posts, we've done website posting, letting people know as much as possible that we're, we're delayed. Uh, have the stuff out, we will take care of it, we're dealing with, I know people are concerned that bags are gonna break and stuff like that. We know that that's an issue, we're gonna take care of it, we're not gonna screw anybody up on that. So right now, we're running, uh, you know, I'm gonna say five, five days behind. The true leaf schedule, we have been working. Anywhere between ten and twelve a day, including Sa- Saturdays and including Mondays. Uh, with the entire crew that we have out there. We are going to keep going all the way until the weather is to the point where we can't do it anymore. Right now, that looks at a minimum, that's probably gonna be December eighteenth. Uh, we usually stop a week or so before that, but we're gonna keep going, picking everything up. Uh, you know, we've gotten a lot of calls and, you know, we've told people, it's basically just, everything's out there at once and. Uh, we've seen our tonnage right now, that's been delivered to the landfill. Is probably about thirty percent over what was delivered there last year in the total fall. So I don't know where the stuff, the more stuff is coming from, because trees are still trees, it's not like they have more leaves on them. But there just seems to be a lot more tonnage out there as well, so. Uh, volume was just the thing and we have, with being short a few people in some other areas. Uh, you know, we can't take people away from trash, can't take them away from recycling. And also bulk is, uh, uh. Out there a little bit for pickup, the, the, the amount of material. That we are picking up this year, trash, recycling in bulk. Is twenty-five percent right now, more than we've done in any other year. Everybody's cleaning out everything and so we are, uh, we are. Doing unprecedented amounts of material over the, I'm gonna say over the past eight months. And especially over the last month when it comes to yard waste.
Thank you for that, Chris, I, I'm not sure, I quite understand how there's more leaves and there's probably the same number of trees, but.
Yeah.
That, that's for the Twilight Zone, I guess.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that one out myself.
How, does, uh, Counselor Davila, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, good to see you, Chris, uh, so, Chris, was today the last day for the, uh, um, leaf pickup?
No, we're, we're gonna run leaf pickup, uh, as long as we can, as the we- as long as the weather holds. We're gonna run it well into December. Well, you know, probably at least another two, two and a half weeks, easy. Because I don't want, I don't want anything to be left out on people's tree belts.
Right, okay.
Yeah, no, we're gonna run it as long as we need to run it.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Are there any other questions on leaf pickup? I just thought it was important to, to get that on the record, uh, because I know, again, a lot of folks have been asking about that, so. It gives us some direction as counselors to, to relay that information, so appreciate hearing that. Uh, Counselor, uh, I see Counselor, uh, Hurst and then Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, Chris, regarding the bulk pickup, do we make any money off of that?
Oh my God, we're losing our shirts. Uh, we, right now, we're at eight bucks for a bulk ticket. Um, bulk right now with the volume that we're doing. Uh, from an eight dollar ticket, uh, off the top of my head, I want to say right now, it might be about a. Thirty to forty thousand dollar negative. On that line item based upon, uh, the revenue that we bring in. Uh, bringing some pretty serious revenue, um. Uh, off of it, we probably sell twenty-five thousand. Uh, bulk stickers a year at eight bucks, so it's a good amount of money, but the disposal costs. For recycling bulk and trash have just gone through the roof.
Okay, and we haven't thought about accounting.
I'd be very happy to raise it to twelve dollars, if you all want to say aye, that would be great, Lindsay would be happy.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Counselor Hurst, Counselor Letterman.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, I've been mulching my leaves this year, it's been working very well. Uh, so for folks who may be, uh, looking for an alternative, it is an option.
Thank you for that.
The other item that I wanted to mention on that is, not that it's a good thing to do, but residents can bring stuff directly to the, to the landfill. Uh, I know it's a pain, you know, if you have a car, want to fill up your trunk with leaves, I know it's a pain, but. You know, if you have the ability, you know, we, you can just go over there, you're just gonna show your license and it gets done.
That's a good tidbit of information as well, Counselor Davila.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Chris, um. I'm going to take this opportunity once again to, to beat my drum. Regarding the bulk stickers. Uh, eight dollars for the yellow sticker, uh, I know you and I have spoken about this before. Um, the only way you can buy it is at, um, DPW Tapley Street or Big Y. Um, can you tell me where we are about making them, making them readily available throughout the city? Through CBS, Walgreens, bodegas?
The, the only issue, when we've looked in the past of doing that. When we started it X amount of years ago with the bulk. Big Y stepped forward and said, we will do it for no cost.
Right.
Every other entity that wants to be participating in it wants to take a cut of them. And the other item then becomes being able to control. Uh, you know, we've gone through a major audit process with Big Y to make sure that, you know, stuff's not walking out the door there. Uh, which we're confident it's not. Uh, but then the issue becomes on these places, if we're, you know, what sort of cut we're getting or they're taking, you know, uh. Does that become an issue? All others that we talked to. Uh, said that they would want to cut and just as an aside, a few years ago. There was discussions about, and when I say a few years ago, we're talking eight, nine years ago. About a discussion going to a pay as you throw trash. Uh, process that was being presented to the city by a couple of vendors, uh, which was. The city, but we did the same research about having to buy bags, if you were gonna have to go buy bags. And we went to all of these entities that said, if we need to sell them for a dollar fifty. What are you gonna sell them for? And they said, well, we'll sell them for two, two twenty-five, just to make money off of it. And so it becomes, you know, one guy selling them for, you know, Big Y will sell them for eight bucks. Somebody else is gonna sell them for eight bucks, but we're only gonna get seven fifty for them. So I know it's a little difficult, they're available in the clerk's office. Uh, we don't have them available at Tapley right now, they're available at the clerk's downtown. And at all of the Big Y's and Big Y has basically said unless they're the, the prime vendor. Uh, for it is that if somebody else does it, they're gonna charge us as well, because they know that it brings traffic into their stores.
Right, I, I understand the explanation, Chris, I mean, it makes sense, however, do you think that by making it readily more available in other venues? Uh, the, um, expected volume increase will offset any, uh, any money we may lose?
Um, no, because basically every sticker that we sell, we lose money on, not that I'm, you know, not that I don't want to pick up whatever it is we can pick up. By picking up more volume doesn't necessarily mean we're, we're gonna get more revenue, but we're also gonna have, uh, um. More material that we gotta get rid of. Uh, we are on that side, you know, the, and as I said, the only reason that we haven't done it is. It, it, to me, it would be a nightmare of going into all these places from an audit standpoint. Just went through an audit with, uh, Yong No.
Right.
And we were going through some stuff about, and that was one of his questions. As well, is that if we expanded it, forget whether people wanted a cut of it or not. Was how we would go about the management of it. You know, Big Y basically takes these things, you go to their service desk, you ask for a sticker, they give it to you and you pay them and they have a receipt. Uh, we would then have to go to all vendors and say, okay, now, these are the protocols that you have to do for the city of Springfield. And they're gonna want their cut, so basically, we haven't done it, is that we're gonna end up losing revenue off of the whole thing.
Right, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I just feel, I feel pretty strongly that, uh. When gray minds get together, we can find a solution to this, because as we know, we have a little problem here in the city and I'm hoping that. Making this more readily available throughout the city will hopefully help decrease the part of the little problem, problem that we have in the city.
Right, just to interrupt you, just, just to interrupt you, Victor, when we were talking with Yong. One of the things that we are looking into is being able to. Purchase a bulk sticker online. So you can go, whether through Facebook or the website or something and purchase it. And all that we're doing at this point is trying to work with IT and setting up a protocol. So, because what we don't want to do is, okay, what you have to do is you're gonna print your sticker out. And we just want to make sure that we have it set up in such a way that, uh. Uh, how the protocol happens, so, you know, somebody just doesn't take it and make fifteen photocopies of it and give it to somebody. Or, uh, you know, when you do your, you do your, you can do an online, uh, order. As far as you're getting an appointment, it's like at the same time, you can buy a sticker, so we know that that sticker is associated with that pickup. So, uh, we want to, we, we're trying to figure that out a little bit, because I think the whole online purchasing thing. Uh, is a great idea. Uh, we just have to make sure that whatever we're doing, you know, can't be.
Duplicated, right, I understand, I understand, uh, yeah, thank you for, for, for the work, Chris. And Mr. Chair, I think this is something that hopefully we can, uh, put in a to-do list to continue for next year's, the bulk speakers. Um, it's something that I've been talking for a while and it's something that I think. Um, we can improve on and I know that, uh, Chris and his team are doing, uh, the best to improve it. But it's something I think we should follow up on, so.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, uh, Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick comment, uh, to Chris, Chris. I don't know how you are marketing and advertising the fact that the folks can just take their leaves to Bondi's Island, um. But it, it, it just seems to me like that message needs to get out. Um, more than, than it has been, I mean, I, I've been living in this city for a long time and I only just. Found out about it like three or four years ago, and so I think the more people that know. Um, the more, uh, the, the less work that we'll have on the city side in terms of, uh, having to collect the leaves, so I don't know.
No, I, I agree with that. I agree with that, Justin, and what we've been doing, what I've been doing at least this year. As I put out notices through Facebook, whether it's ours or the city's. Or whether it's the website or ours or the city's, I've always been putting the caveat in there that landfill is open. Uh, so I'll do, you know, I'll do my best to get that worked, as possible.
And it might, it might be nice to put out a press release that did, you know, a couple of times throughout the year, uh, and especially at times in which we're, you know, we're running behind, just so residents know, so. Um, just a thought, but keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Hurst, a very good point, um. All right, so I think I, I, I certainly have nothing, um, in regard to that conversation, I'm glad it was had. So again, the residents can be made aware. Um, if there are no other questions or comments at this time, um, I do not believe any form of votes are needed for today's session, so. Um, I can certainly move to adjourn. What, Counselor Hurst, would you mind making that motion?
I'll move to.
So, so move.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, I'll have a good evening and I appreciate the conversation.